10:00 AM. In attendance are Commissioners Everline, Duncan, and Matarri. I'm calling this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Would anyone like to speak who's here? Anyone on the line? Nope. Okay. First item, Justice Building Updates, discussion item, and we have David Mendez here.
Good morning. David Mendez with Erie. I've updated the spreadsheet, your budgets. There aren't any, the exception of, there's two items in yellow that we've talked about, one of them, and that is pew seating, and that's, I've just put a $30,000 ROM in that. That's what we talked about. If we go with the Candela, who's the subcontractor for the furnishings in the building under Bowden, if we use that same pew that we're using for the seating in the courtrooms, that would be $30,000. We've found some alternatives that are probably half that. So, we'll go through that, and we'll get that in front of you before we make a decision on that item.
I have that as a line item to talk about in FFNE.
The other item, it's a new item and it's minor. It's a return air duct that they'll need to add to one of the rooms on the third floor, and that's about a couple thousand dollar item at most. So, the important thing to take from that spreadsheet is the remaining amounts that we have and the contingencies for the, we've used 69% of the design contingency at this point, leaving us $271,000 in design contingency, and on the construction contingency, we've used 34%. That leaves us $542,000 in that item. The other items we'll start getting into as we narrow down the budgets, and that is soft costs such as FFNE. So, we've got $1,058 in that budget, and we'll start to draw that down.
Any questions? Comments? I just want to clarify that the bottom-line number you have here, the owner-carried contingency, is that something that we expect to go down, or is that, that's now in this?
Um, are you talking the very bottom of the contingencies?
Yes, the expense item.
Well, under the contingency item, yes, I imagine that's probably going to still draw down some as we go through. There's some items that are going to pop up as we start to occupy that building that we'll want to add, that'll come out of that contingency. You know, they're running into some things as we punch list, we get the city coming in and reviewing the site. They're going to want some changes, I'm sure. So, yes, there will be some changes that'll come up.
So, are we expecting this bottom-line number to be roughly the final estimate?
So, what I've done, if you look at that bottom-line number of $29 million, that's where we currently are with our guaranteed maximum price plus what we've used in the contingencies. If you compare that to the first page, the $30,440, that's where we start. So, that's the contingencies that we had initially, and the GMP of $28 million. So, we're, those two numbers are starting to get closer and closer together.
Okay.
So, if I'm mistaken, the very last page, the bottom, the owner contingency.
Oh.
We're not expecting that to go down. I mean, we're not expecting to use that. So, it's about a million bucks that we won't need.
So, that's our soft costs included. So, that's that $36,900,000 is, that's the total project overall, soft cost plus GMP.
Okay. So, you expect that number to go down significantly, about a million bucks?
Yeah, it should.
Okay.
Price of a Snicker bar?
What's that?
Price of a Snicker bar?
Price of a Snicker bar, yes.
Any other comments or questions? No? All right. Thank you. Moving on to item two, Justice Building Furniture Fixtures and Equipment. It's a discussion item, and we have Director Voller here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. In your packets, I presented a lot of information, but we'll go through a lot of it in detail, and hopefully I had a chance to review that. But, basically, this is the furniture summary for the FFNE contract with Contract Design, and it is in summary format right now. And, basically, just to kind of reiterate the process, so today, we're going to talk about what is included in this package. I can answer any questions that you might have on that, but I want to make sure you understand what this package entails. And then tomorrow, at the special meeting, we're going to bring the actual proposal that will be the signed document, if there's any changes today that we want to make in terms of quantity, or omit something, or add something. That would all be added to the final package that is going to come tomorrow for board approval and signature. Along with that, tomorrow will be a 50% invoice for the deposit that's required to place the order so that we can get that order placed in the timeframe that we have with, that they've provided for us. So, on your desks, I put an updated furniture summary. It's pretty similar to what you had in your packet. There's a couple really minor changes to it, and I will walk you through those. So, starting with task chairs. So, we met with each of the staff in the departments and had sit tests, and so, almost everybody picked a chair on that, and so you can see the overall quantities of chairs. But, basically, we have what we call the Hexi Chair. That was the chair that you guys saw here that was blue and white. That was by far the most popular chair that people liked. But then, also, in the OTG line, we had quite a few different chairs. And then, we have what we call the guest chairs that will go in the offices. So, there's a couple different versions of that. AMP wanted a plastic chair, similar to kind of what we're sitting in here, what I'm sitting in, because it's easy to clean. They wanted it hard-surface, durable. That's what is preferable for them, with no arms. In the prosecutor's office, they wanted a guest chair that didn't have arms, because they often have police officers with duty belts and things that they want, so they did not want arms. And then, we have what I would call a standard guest chair that will be in a lot of the other locations. And so, we've got the overall quantity of chairs in there. And then, I will note that that includes five chairs for the BOCC staff. It was requested that we consider that. Their chairs are 12 years old, and they do have money in their budget that will cover those additional five chairs, so that's included in this overall total. Any questions on chairs?
Questions? Comments? Can I, just, I do have one question. So, this bottom-line number that you gave us, sorry, I'm picking on bottom-line numbers today.
Yes.
Is, this is the maximum that we can expect. You have some flexibility, you said, built in, so it could only go down if you exercised some of your options?
There aren't a lot of options now, at this point, that I think would make this go down unless we reduce quantity and things.
Okay.
But this is a pretty set number for where we're at with Contract Design for their total price on that. So, and I will say, you know, the first round is, we're kind of talking about overall numbers. You know, when they, the very first proposal they gave us was a much higher-end desk line, and that's when we started talking a lot about, is this really the level that we want to be in in terms of the desks and things like that. We've cut that budget down by over $250,000 in this proposal that I have before you now. So, we found considerable savings in...
How much was that?
About $260,000 that we've cut out of that. So, we've come down quite a bit, just in terms of, you know, finding a desk that's a little bit more of a reasonable price point. And actually, from where we were talking with some of those, the prices have come down even more just because of the quantity discount. We actually bumped up into another tier of discounting, and so the price came down a little bit more even than we had initially expected. So, that was good, there was in terms of cost savings there. So, in your packet, I put a sample of what all the chairs, so I'm not going to go into great detail on those. I think we've looked at those a couple of different times, but unless you have any questions specifically about chairs, we'll move on to. Then, the next line item are basically the desks and tables that they have put in there, and those are, actually, I'm going to back up to chairs really quick. In the first packet that I gave you, she had quoted courtroom lobby seating. That was one of the options that we're going to talk about for the lobby seating, and that is a standalone price that we pulled out of there. She just forgot to pull it out of that spreadsheet that I put in your packet. So, there's about $18,000 that was removed in the one that I gave you. So, that's why the number is now under $300,000, or $400,000 is down to $392 is the total bottom line on that. So, those were removed. That's one of the changes in, from what I put in your packet to what you have before you on your desk right now. So, then we go into, we have the courtroom chairs. Again, I gave you samples of all of those, the judges' chambers, we have chairs for that. We have their guest chairs that will go in there. We have separate attorney chairs that will sit at the tables in the courtrooms. Those are all line item out in there. Then, we get into tables. Those will be the conference tables, the jury tables, the small side tables, and there is a floor plan. We can walk through that floor plan if you'd like. I have it pulled up. We can kind of talk a little bit about the actual layout of what we're looking at with some different things. But, we have all the line items of tables and conference tables, jury tables. Then, we go into the desks. We've got all the typical desks. We've got the judges' chambers desks, prosecutors' desks, and then we have what we call the open offices. So, those will be a freestanding desk with a kind of a cubicle-style partition. Those are all lined out in there. In the clerk's area, they are bringing existing desks. They will have a privacy screen attached to the existing desk, just to give a little bit more separation as it plays out into that new facility. And then, under storage, we have some, this is based off of feedback that we had with all of the different departments. Some people wanted different bookshelves. Some people wanted lateral filing drawers, and so those are included as well in that, what we call the storage line item that you see on that proposal. Under industrial shelving, that is just a heavy-duty metal rack. Those are going into the evidence areas. Locking file tubs are, again, an evidence area where we have some locking file tubs so that if we have evidence that's in a file format that is being stored, it can just go in like a rolling file tub. It could either be just taken out as a file or rolled into a courtroom. Paper organizers were a request specifically from the judicial assistants that they wanted those. There's three of those included. Under whiteboards, in the prosecutor's office, we've included a small whiteboard in each office, and one, the other change that you see from the proposal that was in your packet to here is, we changed from, in the big conference rooms, we changed from a glass whiteboard, four-by-eight glass whiteboard, to just a standard, more similar to that kind of a whiteboard. Glass has too much reflection. One of the ideas is that these whiteboards could be used as a screen that we could project right onto the screen in the conference rooms. And so, we just changed a little bit more of a standard, basic whiteboard there. So, the price went down on that, but I actually upped the quantity to three, because I realized we didn't have one on the Level One training room, so I put a whiteboard in there. So, the cost only changed by about $10 more, but I added a third one into that. So, that's the other change that you have from your packet and on your computer that we submitted to what you have before you. So, basically, what that brings us down to is the bottom line of, you know, the FFNE package as presented to you here with installation is $392,000, so $161 cents. And, you know, like you were asking questions, could this go up or down? It basically could, you know, just based off quantity. And then, the one other thing that I think would probably be good for us to talk a little bit about is, we might want to consider ordering a couple extra chairs. I could see, once we get in there, somebody saying, "Oh, I could use an extra side chair here." I put a separate budget quote in there for some extra chairs, and it was really minimal. I figured we could do two of the extra Hexi chairs, and I had a couple of the additional task chairs, or side, sorry, guest chairs in that packet as well, that, you know, we could consider if we wanted. So, there was a couple thousand dollars as an add if we wanted to go that route and get a few additional chairs, and we could certainly have a conversation if you guys feel like that is enough, if we want to up that. If you don't want to do that, that is certainly an option. In the packet, we have the floor plan layout that shows where all the seating is going, the desk configurations, and then they did a nice job in there of showing some 3D renderings of what that will look like in the office. And so, if you had a chance to look at that, it's really kind of up to you. I can walk you through that a little bit right now if you'd like.
Would anyone like to be walked through that?
I don't need to.
Do it.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do it.
Okay. So, first floor, if you can follow my cursor here, I'm in the upper right-hand corner. We're on the lower level right now. This is the AMP area. As you walk in, we'll have waiting room seating. That's going to be the plastic guest chairs. We have a duty chair in here.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Do you have the ability to make it towards that little thing that's up there is easier to see for everybody?
Do we have a laser?
I do not have a laser.
Let's go to laser.
Okay. Okay. So, this is AMP. So, right in here, we have guest seating in here. As you come in through AMP, they are bringing all of their own chairs with them, and they have all updated their chairs recently in, over the last year. So, they are basically getting desks as we come down in through here. Down in the director's office, in the bottom down in here, we have a provided table, but he will get guest seating down in here. In their conference room here, we have an existing provided table that they are bringing over, but they will get new of the conference room chairs in there. In their evidence room, we will have the heavy-duty racks in there. And then, up in the court hold area, we will have the heavy-duty chairs for security to sit in there. That's pretty much it for lower level. We do have the rendering, so you can see what that will look like. In this office, you have, you know, the basic desk. This is a duty box that they are bringing over that they currently have, and then they have requested filing cabinets below. So, it's a small filing cabinet that'll go on the back of their office right in here. So, right there's the filing cabinet.
And we have data in there that show a printer on that. They're bringing that as well?
Yeah. This is a rendering of the director's office that we discussed. Okay. Then, we go into level two, sorry, level one is what we call this. So, this is the main entry. As you walk in through the main entry here, we have a screening desk, and then this is where they will go through the metal detectors. So, there is a small table that sits there with a task chair for the bailiffs to sit in. In the bailiff's office, they have their typical desks with their heavy-duty seating. Help desk has seating in there. This is one of the jury rooms, so that has the jury conference table as well as the jury seating. In this lower corner down in here, we have, is the evidence room, so we'll have the locking file tubs with the metal shelving. And then, as you move over into judges' chambers, we'll have the, so the judges will have a U-shaped desk with a conference table and their guest seating. Their judicial assistants will have a bank of drawers over in here with their L-shaped desk. And then, court reporters have their desks sitting over in here. The typical courtroom layout is, we'll have the three attorney chairs right up in here. We, if you recall, we did take out the attorney table. We're going to do that with, right now, we're getting pricing from Candela, the, under the contract to do that, so it matches everything in the courtroom, because if you walk into the courtroom, all the benches have a very distinct style on it, and so to go with something that's just a little bit different, I think the coloring will be off, and so we're going to have, we're asking Candela to see if they can build those attorney tables for us, and we're waiting on getting pricing from Bowden on that. We have the bailiff's desk right in here, so that's where the bailiff will sit, and then we have the judge, the witness, and the clerk and court reporters over in here, and they have their very specific seating that was called out in there. Over on this side, we have the conference room, training room, so that'll have a bank of what we call flip-top tables. So, those can be configured in multiple different ways. They can be flipped up and moved to a wall if you only want some of them. And then, that will have the conference room seating going around it. This is where I added a dry erase board that'll go on this wall, and they have a storage bank in here. Couple of the conference rooms had that included in the contract. For some reason, we didn't put any storage in this conference room, and so we have just a bank of storage that's going to go in, called a wall cabinet, that's going to go in that conference room. Down in here, this is a break room, so the break room will have break tables with the plastic seating that will go in there. And then, this over here is the clerk's area. The clerks are bringing their desks with them. They will, however, have a low credenza that is going to go on the side to give them a little bit of storage, and that will be included, and then the privacy screen that will be attached to each of those desks will be included in this section here. In the private offices in the clerk's area, they will have a desk and a guest chair to sit in there. This is what the clerk's area will look like. You can see the low storage credenza in here, existing desk. They are bringing existing chairs with the privacy screen. I use this one with the privacy screen right in there.
I like how they put the county seal on the screens there.
I know, right. Nice touch. Typical office on the first floor. Court reporter's layout. They do have a, let's see, the court reporters have a personal storage tower, and that was something that they requested. So, they have some file storage, a little bit of personal storage in a drawer, and then like a mini credenza where they could put a jacket or something, and that was something they requested in their meeting that we had with them. This is what the judges' chambers will look like. So, you have a U-shaped desk, a wardrobe for their, because they change clothes quite a bit, quite a bit of filing cabinet for their law books, and then a table and guest chairs that they will have in their conference room sitting there. Judicial assistants, this is their typical layout. This is what the jury room will look like with the jury table and then the jury seating around. And this is the training room with the flip-top tables and the seating going around it with the storage cabinet in the back. This is the layout of the screening supervisors and the bailiff's area. And that's the bailiff's office. Okay. Then, we move to level two. So, level two is two courtrooms, two jury rooms, two judges' chambers. So, most of those are pretty similar to what we already talked about. The one thing that I'll point out here is that on this one, there's quite a few different small conference rooms. So, in this corner here, over here in this corner, this corner here. Because those are going to be public conference rooms for, you know, attorneys to meet with clients that are coming for a court date, or, you know, a family to sit and wait, or there's going to be various things on that. We did put a variety of seating in that. So, we mixed up some of the, like, the bigger one over in this corner is a little bit nicer one, so we actually put the conference room seating in there. The next one over, we put seating that would be more of a typical guest chair. So, we just kind of mixed that up, so we have some different styles of seating for different configurations of those conference rooms, and we can mix and match those a little bit. But, that's not all the jury-style conference room seating that we put in those.
Point out the pew seating.
Okay. So, the pew seating, and we'll talk about this, but the pew seating is outside of the courtrooms, and that's going to kind of be the next conversation, once we wrap this up, of where we want to go with this. So, but, you can see a rendering of where those would go. Those were not included on any of the plans, but outside the courtroom, there's a seat bench there, seat bench there, seat bench there, 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 on the second floor. It's similar to that on the first floor. I didn't pull those out where the one courtroom is. But, most of those are eight-foot or six-foot, because we're putting, we're slotting them in between the windows, and, but that's kind of the typical layout that we're going to be looking at when we get to that part of the conversation as we talk about the seating for that.
Quick question. Where's the building facing? Which side is north?
Oops, on this one. So, north is to the top.
Up page, yeah.
Yeah. Top of the page. Okay. And then, this is level three, so this is all AMP, so you have a lot of offices in here. Sorry, prosecutors, my bad. So, prosecutors in here, basically the typical L-shaped desks in all of those as you move through with chairs. This is the director with a conference table. This is their break area with a couple tables with the plastic chairs. They have a large conference room, small conference room, so you can see the table configuration in there with the seating moving around in there, and small conference room. They will have a whiteboard on each of those walls that they could opt to project onto or use for whatever they need that for. In their lobby, their lobby's right up in here, there is some of the, it's the guest chair seating that has the arms on it that we put in that lobby with a one little side table. This is the respite room that has the little bit, that's the lounge chair, the one lounge chair that was in your packet with a little tiny side table that pulls up on that. And that, I think there's a couple, there's several rendering, oh, they have, sorry, some open office space that I forgot to call out. Okay. They have open office space for, I can't remember what they call their staff, but their assistants, and so they're going to be basically like a cubicle style that goes here, here, here. Three of them down here in this corner, two of them up here in this little nook right there. That's your typical office layout in there. That's what the cubicle-style seating will look like. Conference room. So, that's the summary of kind of the overall layout with the renderings of that. So, any questions on this portion of this? Again, next steps will be to bring the formal contract proposal that you guys will sign and review tomorrow.
Thank you. Any questions?
More just like comments. I'm fine with the list as it is. I think we should gather the secondary list, which would still keep us under $400,000. And then, I'll just point out that right now, we have $745,615 left in our FFNE, and so, we'll have about $300,000.
Well, there's two items that I'll just forewarn you that we've got coming. One is the equipment for the courtrooms that the state is providing. I got two answers on that. One is the state was paying for it, and the other is that we're paying for it until the funds, if they come or they don't come. So, there's that portion of it. And then, the second thing is, we've got refrigerators and microwaves and things like that that still is out there. That's not a big cost. There's several of them that are coming from the building.
But, right now, we're in really good shape, is what I'm saying.
Yes, we are. Plus, there's, if you look at the soft costs, I had another $200,000 in an item that would cover the electronics, the cabling, and I bumped that FFNE number up a little bit in that $200,000, and I don't think we're going to touch that.
And Commissioner Duncan, the secondary list you're referring to are the extra chairs?
Is in our packets, and it's about $2,472. That's the arms, the...
Extra parts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're okay with that as presented as well?
I am. I think it's a good idea.
Commissioner Everline?
Go ahead.
Yep.
Spares are good.
I do have color samples that the designers put together. So, these were selected by Contract Design based off of the overall color palette that we have in the building. They, for the desks, they've picked a brown with a little bit of a gray tone into it that'll match the carpet. Carpet's gray, it's got a lot of color in it, so I think that'll complement that quite well. The cubicles have, are going to be a grayish fabric on the cubicle partitions, and then a couple of the side pieces will be just kind of... And then a couple of the side pieces will be just kinda with standard black. So if you wanna look at those, I will have those available after the meeting if you care to take a look at those. Okay, so seems like we're okay as presented for that. That's, that's the package we'll bring you for formal approval tomorrow based on that. The second piece to FFNE for this consideration now goes to the seating that is outside of the courtrooms. So I discussed this a couple of weeks ago, that we realized we didn't have anything on the renderings, and nobody had factored in any seating for outside of the courtrooms. And if you walk into our existing courtrooms, there's often a lot of people sitting on the wooden benches that we have out there. And so the first, we looked at three different options for that, that we need a little bit of discernment on which direction you would like us to go for that. The first option was through the contract with Bowden, we had them look at the pew-style seating. That's the seating that will be in the gallery of the courtrooms. And so we have a price on that, and that will be about $30,000 for that overall package. Actually, it was about $33,000. I don't recall, I don't remember. It's in, it's in the package. The second option was I asked, I asked contract design through the FFNE company to take a look at what they thought they could do for that. And they presented a wooden base with a softer seat on it. And I think that, that would be adequate. I do think there's probably a little bit of wear and tear on those seats over time that's gonna wear out. Talking with the bailiffs, I think they would prefer something that is kind of a forever seat. So the pew-style seating is very durable, very long-lasting, very easy to maintain.
What's it made out of?
The pews are wood.
So it's the same, it's the same product that you're getting in your courtrooms for the, for the audience seating?
It's a solid wood stained, is what that one is. Okay, and then through contract design is a wood base with a soft seat with a, kind of a pleather top on it. And then the third option is kinda like an airport-style seating. So it's, it's called a beam, beam seating. And so that has the beam that goes all the way across, and then it will have the seats going that, that fast into that. And there's a picture of that in the package as well. That one is considerably less. And I think, as I talked to the bailiffs, they're, they would prefer either the pew-style seating or the beam seating. They're fine with either one of those. Because like I said, they, they want them, one, to hold down, two, to be durable and easy to clean, long-lasting. So I would recommend we consider either the pew-style seating or the beam seating. And obviously, the beam seating is considerably less in terms of the cost. So we're looking at about $16,000 compared to $32,000, about half the price if we go with the beam seating.
Questions, thoughts?
Well, thoughts, I prefer the beam seating. There, it's gonna be easier to clean and less wear and tear.
Sounds appropriate.
There you go. You have direction.
Okay, I do. Thank you.
Anything else?
I don't think so. I think I've covered everything.
Well, thank you very much. Onto item number three. Springston Bridge mitigation funds with the Historic Preservation Commission. And I believe we have Courtney Beebe on the line.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. So we're here to give you a status update on an agreement that the Board of County Commissioners may ask to become a concurring party to. We have provided a copy of the agreement to Jonathan for your review. I'll try to walk through this as quickly as possible. The Eastside Highway District is removing two bridges. The first is the Canyon Road Bridge, which is out by Cataldo. The second is the Springston Bridge, which is down by Harrison. The Canyon Road Bridge will be transported down to the City of Starr and relocated. The cost will be about $1.3 million. This cost will be borne by a group called the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council. They go by LTAC. LTAC, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the State Historic Preservation Office have reached an agreement to move that bridge. This is a loss of a historical asset to Cootney County. The Springston Bridge will be removed and destroyed. This is also a loss to Cootney County of a historical asset. The $1.3 million of relocation is called a mitigation expense. So LTAC and the State Historic Preservation Office and the Army Corps of Engineers have agreed that by removing the bridge and transporting it to the City of Starr, that mitigation has been achieved. Regarding the Springston Bridge, the Springston Bridge will be destroyed, and the LTAC organization owes the people of Cootney County mitigation for the loss of this historic asset. So they will be committing $260,000 of state funds, and I want to emphasize, these are only state funds, to serving the people of Cootney County. Instead of contracting directly with organizations in Cootney County for the use of the $260,000, LTAC, the State Historic Preservation Office, and the Army Corps have agreed to place that money into a mitigation bank. That bank will be like an account. And the historical nonprofits, as well as the Cootney County Historic Preservation Commission, our local museums, may apply for grants to be funded out of this mitigation account. Now, like I mentioned, the agreement is between LTAC, the State Historic Preservation Office, and the Army Corps of Engineers. The Board of County Commissioners will be asked in about two weeks whether you would like to sign on to that agreement as a concurring party, or whether you would not like to concur to that agreement. Regardless, the money will be placed in the mitigation bank, and our local organizations will be able to access it through a grant application process. So I'm gonna stop right there, and I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Not yet.
No. I have one question. Could you just quickly describe the pros and cons if the board decides to, to participate or not participate?
That is an excellent question, and thank you for asking it. There are, there will be no changes. There is no con, and there is no pro. We were basically cut out of the process in negotiating this agreement. And so these decisions have kind of been made for us. We are not the only organization in this position. The Coeur d'Alene Tribe is in a similar position. For example, the Coeur d'Alene Tribe will receive its own mitigation funding from this agreement directly, and they will decline to sign the agreement. It is the recommendation of our commission that we not sign as a concurring party, because we were not part of negotiating the agreement. Either way, we will receive two things. First, we'll receive that access to the mitigation account. And also, LTAC has agreed to place the Yellowstone Trail on the National Register of Historic Places. That is a direct benefit to Cootney County. So we do benefit directly through the National Register listing of the historic Yellowstone Trail. We also receive access to the grant funding in the mitigation bank.
Okay, so it sounds like you're recommending that the board not enter into this memorandum of agreement, but that the Historic Preservation Commission will be able to access these grant funds?
That is correct. The agreement will be finalized on April 4th and then submitted to us to give to you. And at that time, we'd like to come back and give a formal recommendation based on the finalized agreement. But yes, we will have access to the grant funding. Grant funding will not require any matches. It will be direct funding. We simply have to submit applications.
Okay, and this was listed as an action item. So is there something that you want the board to do with respect to this?
Yes, we'd like to have the memorandum of, a memorandum agreement forwarded to legal, just in case you'd like to have legal review it and give their separate opinion.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that?
I just have one question, Courtney. On the stipulation section, the item three, the Yellowstone Trail part, and then all the way down to subsection B, three, that's really not a complete sentence, the second sentence isn't complete sentence. So I'm just curious, I was too, it's recorded as separate what? So that's just something that, that question probably needs to be answered. And yeah, I, personally, I don't see any reason to send it to legal, as I'm not interested in signing it.
Commissioner, ever line?
I have about the same thoughts myself.
Okay, well, there you go. So I guess we'll, we'll let it just die on the vine here.
Okay. Would you like, when they do finalize the agreement, and you're right, Commissioner Duncan, that is not a complete sentence, and it is not a complete agreement. This is where they're at today. The final agreement will be available on April 4th. Would you like us to forward that to you or legal for your consideration and a vote? Or would you prefer not to do that?
I mean, I don't mind looking it over again, but I, again, unless something drastic has changed to change HPC's opinion on this, then I, I don't need to see it.
Yeah, I, I think the main issue is the fact that we did not participate in this process. So there's no reason for us to be a signatory on this document. And if we had participated, maybe it might be a little different story. So I think your recommendation is spot on, and I don't think there's any reason to bring it before the board.
Okay, thank you very much. I will let the, I am, just so you know, attending that meeting on April 4th. I will let them know your decision, and I, I will follow through with Jonathan. But I do appreciate your time, and, and thank you very much for letting us to talk with you about this.
Well, thank you. So appreciate it very much. Okay, next item, number four. Rathdrum Westwood Historical Society FY26 funding request. And I believe this has to do with a roof and Lisa Peterson. And you just wanna make sure your microphone is on, which I think it is. A little green light will be there. There you go.
Yes, it is. Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Lisa Peterson. I am here on behalf of the Rathdrum Westwood Historical Society, seeking funds from the county to replace a deteriorating roof on part of our building. Just a quick history of the jail building. It was built in 1890. That's a picture from 1900. It served as the county jail for, until 1908, until Rathdrum was removed as the county seat. It became a library, it became a town meeting hall, and then later, it was modified somewhat to become city equipment storage. That's a picture of circa about 1981. The building was scheduled for demolition in 2006, when the Rathdrum Westwood Historical Society came in and purchased it from the city. It was actually put on the National Register of Historic Places in 2001. So it had already been documented, but the Historical Society wanted to save it. They raised private funds to do the restoration as closely as they could to the original blueprints. So they restored the tower there, and then added that 72-person-capacity meeting hall to the north side. Also, we are, the society is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. It's entirely volunteer labor and entirely based in donations. Okay, we do a lot of community participation. When I was putting together this list, I realized this is a lot of stuff. Since its inception, incorporation in 1999, the Historical Society has been a member of the Rathdrum Chamber of Commerce, so for over 25 years. Last year, the last couple of years, we have resumed public school tours. We did 80 third graders last, last season, and over 200 homeschool students. We also do private tours for anyone who's interested. More recently, I did a group for like an adult activity group that was just kind of a going-out group. We've done a genealogical society, came to tour the jail. People, just with family visiting, will schedule a private tour for anyone, anytime. So more recently, we did a presentation to the Rathdrum Library Senior Group, which was pretty fun. We scheduled two private tours for them in May. So I'm looking forward to making a relationship with them. We get research requests from the community, sometimes about the name of a road or the history of a house. More recently, we got a request from the high school. A band student wanted to know if we could figure out how old his tuba was. So we don't know that. But we did send him pictures of the city band from 1912, a few pictures from the city band, and the high school band and high school orchestra from the '30s, and a really fun one from 1951, where they all have these fun matching uniforms. So we do the best we can. The last, since 2020, we've sponsored the T-ball team through Parts and Rec. We donate annually to Holidays for Heroes through the Rathdrum Police Department. And again, we do all this volunteer labor and donations for income. So this is the roof in question. The cell room, that sits to the back of the building. It's the building where the original jail cells were housed. This roof, we don't have a solid answer for how old it is, to be honest. It's, when the roof is new and properly laid, there should be a little bit of daylight shining through the shingles, because it's designed that way to provide cover and ventilation. That does not demonstrate that at all. Those are holes, and they're from damaged or broken shingles, or shingles that were blown off. We hoped we could get away with patching it. This is the roof after the patch. We obviously stuck new shingles in there. It's not sustainable. It's not a long-term solution. The building is in very, very good condition for its age, and it has the expectation of longevity. So a replacement is worth it for the future of the building. We went all the way back in meeting minutes, all the way back to 2011, after the restoration. They were talking about this. So the shingles were fixed, 2012, the roof was repaired. 2013, the shingles continue to blow off. And then 2023, we took some of our grant, our IHT grant money, and repaired it for $2,500. But it's not a permanent solution. So if we repair it now, that fixes it for a pretty long time. The, the Google consensus on how long a shingle roof, a cedar shingle roof like this should last is about 30 to 50 years. Now, that depends on the quality of materials and the skill of the installer. So we've got a bid. There we go. Our bid is from Granite Roofing. They're a local company. He has worked on historical buildings before. This, his bid is $42,000. This includes the cost of the specific shingles that were recommended by the state when they came up and did a project assessment. So these are the best available quality shingles for this purpose. And the guy has experience, so we're, we're working with the best that we can get to finish this roof. So hopefully, it will have some longevity. We got a 2022 IHT grant for $13,000. We used some of that to do the repair. We have more than that left than I thought. So we have $11,740 remaining there that we have to match. Our income surplus last year was $2,516, which was a really, really good year for us. However, we don't work in the kind of figures that, that a roof replacement would require. So we are requesting $30,000 from the Cootney County Commissioners to take care of the roof problem from now until, you know, for the next, hopefully, 30 to 50 years. Do you guys have any, any questions?
Questions, comments, thoughts?
Well, we're just entering budget season. We can consider this request during budget season. I think for me, typically, I always look to fund our mandated services first. We've gotten, we've pared down our community outreach, our community donations in the last few years. And so mostly because... And so mostly because labor's really expensive and we have to, you know, like our current jail is undergoing some, yeah, renovations and stuff. But it's something that, you know, we can bring forward as a consideration.
If you, we appreciate it. We're still, I'm still writing other grants, trying to get more funding, but, you know, everything's tight right now, so it's worth a shot.
Commissioner Arboin?
I think I poll in with Leslie.
I do have some questions for you. Is there a fee, or do you solicit donations when people tour the museum?
We have a suggested donation. So we don't charge anyone. We wanted to make sure it's available to everyone in the community. So no, we suggest a donation even of a couple of dollars per person, but there's just a sign there, nobody pushes that at all. It's like everyone is welcome.
Okay. And what about on the, have you spoken to any other jurisdictions?
No, no, just Cootney County, as far as county is concerned.
Or any other cities, anyone else throughout the county? No?
No.
Okay, do you plan to?
I'm not sure. I mean, we would talk to Rathdrum, I suppose, but...
Okay. And then the only other question I have is just, you have been sponsoring other groups and so forth over the years, so...
Yeah, we do what we can. You know, it's a little bit here, a little bit there, but we want to be a part of the community.
I understand. Look, I think it's really neat to try to preserve something like this. I'm a big proponent of trying to preserve historical landmarks. You know, the question is, you know, where does the, where does the county or any other agency fall when it comes to backstopping these things? You know, because if you ask us for money, in essence, we are, we are sponsoring these groups because that sponsorship is in lieu of reinvesting in the building or saving for these kind of capital expenditures. But I am open to figuring out a way and working with the board where we can find some money. But I would also appreciate it if you could contact other agencies, other jurisdictions, and see where they are. And maybe we can have more of a collaborative, joint approach to this before, you know, kind of making the county the backstop.
Okay. No, I appreciate, we definitely appreciate that. Are you suggesting like contacting different cities like Rathdrum, Spirit Lake, like that? Yeah, we can do that, for sure.
I mean, it's, it's, it's all of our history, in a sense, so, yeah.
Okay.
But I certainly appreciate you coming in and bringing this to our attention.
Well, thank you, and thank you for listening. I didn't know this was a thing that we could do, so we jumped on it and did a presentation. Did you guys have any other questions, anything?
No.
Commissioner Matarri, I apologize, this is Courtney Beebe. I wanted to stay on the phone. Do I have permission to just make a comment for Ms. Peterson?
Of course.
Ms. Peterson, the Cootney County Historic Preservation Commission would like to meet with you regarding your request. Our goal as part of our historic preservation plan is to provide funding information and opportunities to people like the Rathdrum Trail, and we would like to collaborate with you particularly because of the mitigation bank that I just spoke about.
Oh, awesome. No, thank you. We would love that. We'll definitely get in touch with you very, very soon to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much.
Yep, there you go. All right, well, thank you so much for coming in. Okay, next up is item five. This is a side-scanned sonar system replacement, and I have Sergeant Ryan Miller here.
Morning, Commissioner. Sergeant Ryan Miller for the record. With me, I have Sergeant Ryan Odegaard of the sonar team. He's the team leader. And Doug Harris is the chairman for the waterways advisory board. Yes, I'd like to talk to you about our sonar team. So the Cootney County Sheriff's Office Sonar stands for Sound Navigation and Ranging. Essentially, there's equipment that we use to take photographs of the lake bed, lake beds in our area using sound waves. So they're using this equipment from the surface to photograph in the event that we're looking for equipment, evidence, or people as well. The sonar system was back in 2006, prior to 2006, no one in the state of Idaho had this capability. There was a local realtor that drowned on Lake Coeur d'Alene. We, again, no one had this technology in the state. There was a private entity was reached out to and provided some services to help locate that individual. There were friends and coworkers from that drowning that came forth and wanted to purchase a system for Cootney County. Cootney County Sheriff's Office repurchased a vessel, a 1991 vessel that we still have to this day. We actually, just about two years ago, repowered the engines in that, and now we're at the point, and we actually bought a new trailer for it as well. So that system is now good and ready to go for about 30 years, hopefully, the vessel, another 30 years. The equipment now is at the point to where it is no longer serviceable. So we have, on this sonar team, and we use it every year. Every year, we have incidents either on our waterways or other local waterways. Currently, in the state of Idaho, there's Bonneville County down in the southern part of the state, and Ada County is starting a team. So they're very, very new still in what they're doing, and then we're the only ones to the north. So the sonar equipment is now, again, getting to, well, it's well past its serviceable life. So the equipment that we have is about 19 years old, some of it, the analog system, and that no longer works. So we switched to a digital system about 15 years ago. That's what we're currently using, and again, that is now to its serviceable, or past its serviceable life. We would need a replacement. We also have a robot system that we use. In the event that the, the victim that we're locating is, you know, below 100 feet, we don't send divers down that deep. So the robot system will then go retrieve the individual, bring it to about 40 feet where the divers will beat it and do the recovery. That robot is also reaching its end life, and we're going to have to replace that. That's going to be at a later date. We can't even locate the subjects or the equipment at this point without the proper sonar equipment. So what I'm wanting to talk to you about today is a look about, to look to replace the sonar equipment. I'd like to come to you at a future business meeting and talk about that. I'm wanting to reach out. So right now, the first quote that we have, we do have a couple quotes that we're waiting on as well. However, the quote that I have before us today for $84,277.23, that is the existing system that we have. So it would be an exact replacement, updated, obviously, of the current technology that the sonar team has been utilizing. There are others out there, but they're not the same. They're not equal. It's a proprietary system. So you can get less expensive systems, more on a, it'd be a recreational-style system, or you can get the systems that are a lot more money that the Navy uses. So this would be the most reasonable system for us. And again, it's the same type of technology that they're currently using. What I would like to do today is get your permission to speak to a local 501(c)(3) organization that is potentially willing to supplement some of the cost. What my ask to them is going to be about $40,000, so it'd be half of the system. Then I would like to come to you again at a business meeting probably next week and ask for the commissioners to assist us with taxpayer money for about $21,000, and then the vessel account would take the other $21,000 and change. I'm sorry, it's actually $22,138.62 from the general fund, and it would be 20, yeah, $22,138.61 from the vessel account. That's what I would be looking at doing. Do you have any questions for us?
Any questions? Well, you make a comment, sure.
I think in this particular case, I don't know that it was really contemplated that it was going to die right now. So I would say that we could look to contingency funds for that $22,000 if the board agrees that some general fund is needed. I would say that, you know, taking it from the vessel fund is, is good. However, a lot of, like the airplane crash, the boaters really should not have to pay for something like that. So there's a lot of stuff that happens on the lakes that this equipment is used for that does not include boaters. That makes sense.
Correct. And if I may comment on that, the, so over the past several years, even, I'd say the past 10 years, we're using, utilizing this equipment on our waterways annually. And again, yeah, 2020, we had the plane, the two planes crashed, so that was not boater-related. A couple of years before that, we did have the triple fatality with two boats colliding. And then usually each year, it is someone falling off a vessel, so it's not necessarily vessel-related, but swimming, they're coming off of a beach, or there's, you know, items being thrown off of bridges, things like that. So thank you for bringing that up. But yes, they're not all boating-related fatalities or incidents.
Do you have a specific 501(c)(3)?
We do. It's the Mahogany Boaters Education Association, NBEA. They previously have given some money to Parks and Waterways to purchase some buoys.
Sounds like Nixon there, too.
He was, he beat us to it, apparently. So they are, I would like to meet with them and confirm that that's something that they're willing to do, but they would come to a business meeting with us as well. Again, if it's next Tuesday, they would potentially do that.
It's expensive stuff, but, you know, when people lose a loved one, cost doesn't count.
Agreed. And that's something, too, that to note, we have also gone outside of the state, so we're the only regional asset that has this, other than Flathead County in, near Kalispell. They do have a system. They had fishermen go missing last year, last summer, up there, and their entities, again, because they're still, it takes a lot, the equipment's one portion of it, but something that I couldn't speak to enough is the team that we have has more knowledge than anyone else in this region. So they had two different teams that were looking for this individual up there. We sent our team up to assist as they were kind of pretty much at the end, and our team was able to locate that individual for them. We've also helped in Orafino, we've helped in Sullivan Lake, there's been others. So it's been outside of our county, outside of the state even. Typically, we don't ask for reimbursement from some of these other entities because they don't have the funding source for it. The state, inside the state of Idaho, Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation has helped us with fuel costs and food and lodging. And then that's typically what we'll ask for from these other entities, is, you know, maybe help us with some fuel or some lodging for the deputies, as they did up in Flathead County. The, Montana has called us many times recently. One of the things that we can easily justify us going to these other regions, even outside of Idaho, is it's essentially training for them as well. So, you know, that's why we have so much knowledge, because we're, we'll go not just all the lakes and waterways that we have in Cootney County, but we'll also go outside within the region as well to assist.
Any other questions, comments? Sounds like you have direction.
Thank you very much. I'll try to get in front of you next week and present at a business meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is item six, Lakes Highway District Hold Harmless Agreement with the Bayview Dock. This has my name next to it, and I've been just in touch with Eric Shanley over at the Highway District. From my understanding, the edits that our corporate, our county council has incorporated into this agreement, which were largely just removing the other dock locations, were seen and approved by the board at Lakes Highway District. I have it on the business meeting for today. And so I put it in this meeting in case there are any questions, thoughts, or concerns from the board.
Nope, just ready to move that down the road and get that permit signed so we can get that dock replaced.
So once we execute this agreement, then the next step is for Parks and Waterways to get a permit from Lakes Highway District so we can get that dock installed in the water as soon as possible.
Can you do an overview with, you know, with all these people here?
With respect to just how we got here and where we are, sure, absolutely.
Beat somebody having to drive back down.
Yes. Well, the, the main reason we're in this situation is because the dock was deteriorating. There was styrofoam in it, and it had deteriorated, it was starting to deteriorate more and more rapidly. And as a consequence of that, Director Snyder took the initiative and had that dock removed from Lake Ponderay to avoid having the styrofoam beads get all over the, into the water. And it was done appropriately with the blessing of the state, and, but it happened very quickly. And so there really wasn't an opportunity. And in hindsight, it's always 2020 where we could have spent a little more time communicating with the folks in Bayview, just to explain what was happening, why it was happening, and what to expect. But we had already initiated through Parks and Waterways a replacement dock. Simultaneously, we had some leases that were, we did not appropriate funds for this year, and so that kind of added to the issue itself. But I think this board, we've all agreed that we want to make sure that we can get the replacement dock in as soon as possible, work with Lakes Highway District on that, and find a way quickly to at least have a, another lease agreement for this year so boaters and the community are not affected. And then that buys us some time to have discussions for longer-term plans. And that's where we are today. Any questions? Nope? Okay. Next up is item seven, Policy 600 for FY26. It's a discussion item, and it has B.O.C.C. listed to it. Was there anyone up here that wanted to speak about that?
No, I think it was Jennifer.
Okay. So we have Clerk Locke here to discuss it.
Thank you. So I sent last week, I think either Wednesday or Thursday, we had discussed this about in the elected officials meeting, regarding when it's inside the budget process that elected officials in the respective departments could just go to HR directly for job initial reclassification for positions, and then put that in their budget, and then continue to follow the, the B.O.C.C. departments would still need to come before the board in the last two HR meetings that we have, the 3rd of April, and then we have an HR meeting on the 17th to get at least approval for two commissioners to get that reevaluated, the reclassification of a job. And then when it's outside the budget process, I think it's basically what we had initially is that we follow the same, that we come before the board to ask, outside the budget process, to reclass a position before it is sent directly to HR. We'll have your approval for that, so you know what's happening outside the budget process.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Nope.
No, it's just, it's just a matter of if we don't have the funds to fund some of these positions, then HR has expended a lot of work. So I think that was one of the reasons why we said we should look at these ahead of time. But, I mean, you know, it's, it's the way we've done it in the past.
I think what we've been seeing is many things have been done through the mid-year process, and so this process really should be done where the elected officials can basically put a budget together and say, this is our lease, and be able to explain that to the board and the community in a public meeting. So I feel that departments do, that do try to, or elected officials try to do that within that budget process, it's somewhat being penalized versus people that do it through the mid-year process.
Well, the way I hear it is that it's not working the way it was set up, and I'm okay with changing it with the understanding that we might have to just modify a little bit as we go. So I would ask if it's okay with you, Clerk Locke, that we at least try to get feedback back to the board if there's issues, and hopefully, the other electeds will give us that feedback so we can modify it as we need to.
I haven't received any. I sent it out to everyone, any feedback. So when I talk to legal, we would either need to try to ratify this at a next business meeting. You could try to do exception to policy, but I think they prefer that we ratify this policy update. And I would say the urgency is that everyone understands, including the B.O.C.C. departments right now, they have two HR meetings, the 3rd of April and then the 17th of April, to come before the board to ask for this reevaluation or initial reclassification of a new position. And then they have to have everything due to HR for reclassification by April 21st. So I just think it's important that we have clarity, at least amongst the elected officials. Again, the B.O.C.C. should still follow the same procedure, their departments, that is, what direction we should go, because we will need to submit this either next week, I think it's by Monday or Friday, and then the following HR meeting on the 17th.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? No?
How do you want to proceed forward for next week's business meeting?
I mean, I'm good with, you know, agreeing with, you know, to what's in there now, the language.
Yeah. Do you guys have any other issues on that? I haven't heard back from other electeds.
No, I mean, an exception to policy is quicker and cleaner, but, you know, it's not a problem. This is how we operated in the past, so...
Okay. So how do you guys, if you do want to ratify this, how do you want to submit it on the business meeting?
Yeah, just on base.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Do you want me to do that, since it's the B.O.C.C.'s that sets policy, or do you want the board to do that?
You have all the updated stuff, and you'll need a clean copy. So if you don't mind doing that, that would be helpful.
So you, do you want me to have legal review? So you, do you want me to have legal review it before I do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we'll get it in.
We have till this Wednesday, then, to get this submitted. Just, so I'll, I guess, talk to Darren or Dave, but it is a B.O.C.C. that sets a policy.
Thank you. All right, that's item seven. Next up is in...
Hold on, I think Sylvie has something for that item.
I'd like to just run it through legal real quick, and then HR would be happy to submit it for Tuesday.
Okay.
As long as we get legal review.
Okay.
So we can go ahead and handle it since we manage the policies for the board.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great.
All right. So next up is item eight. That's an executive session, but I was going to suggest we do public comment now before the executive session.
Yes.
With that said, who would like to speak? Go ahead, Ron, come on down. Just please state your first and last name for the record.
Morning Commissioners, Ron Hartman for the record. Just a couple comments. One with the roof. It looks like you only got one bid. I really recommend you get more than one, especially with roofs. I attempt this, just a suggestion, is all. The other one, to a concern, the tariffs go into effect next week, and Trump is not getting along at all with Canada. So I don't see many reliefs happening there, other than maybe automotive with the Big Three. You're getting a lot of this furniture, my understanding, from Canada. I think there's a risk here that needs to be understood, because I saw a price of $392,000. Well, 25% of that's $100,000 roughly, that I think you'd need to be able to assess, what kind of risk are you getting into if you give a guy half the money upfront before the tariffs go into effect, and then you're locked in. I'd want something in the contract guaranteeing me the price. Just my view.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak? Who's here? Go ahead. Just state your first and last name for the record, please.
Gary McDonald from Bayview, Idaho. Wanted to thank the Commissioners for keeping the ball rolling on this dock project. I did want to ask, when would it come up to a business meeting for a vote, I assume a vote on the Hold Harmless? Is that the next thing?
Well, this isn't Q and A, but we did say earlier that we were gonna, that it's already on the business meeting for today, so it's before us, at 2:00 PM.
I see. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Anybody else would like to speak? Anyone on the line? Okay, item number eight. I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 742061F.
Second.
Commissioner Aberline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye.